A motion for the proposed changes to the agenda as so indicated? Thank you. Second? Thank you. Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right. Minutes. We have lots of minutes.
I have a couple more questions for. Only two of them. We used to like to discuss the 2012 hearing in September after people came. Some of the [inaudible].
[inaudible] something about allowing this.
Page two at the bottom. And third, that's why I say if we can have open session, and [inaudible] as well, we exempt, I have motion by which, the motion by which, the one that [inaudible].
Any other changes?
Nothing at all.
They have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion.
Thank you, second.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Thank you.
Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Mayors' report. Today is a day with a lot of good news. The post office is staying in the town of Washington for [inaudible]. It is thanks to a lot of effort by a lot of people, some of whom are in this room, some are not. I think ahead of the list would be John Sullivan for the effort that he did to move this through, and Tim Tedrick, the builder. And by mentioning those two names, I do not want to belittle the efforts of a number of other people who have helped in this whole process. But on behalf of the town council, if I may, I'd like to thank everyone participating in that process and make sure we have a post office here still in the town of Washington. Having said that, we do have a, I dare not call it a committee, a task force, a group that is meeting to determine several things. One, we have to determine signage out on the street for the post office. We requested and were reluctantly allowed to not have the neon U.S. Postal Service sign that's on the street. We have a chance to do our own. We have a $5,000 budget for landscaping, and the new post office will be brick. It will not be nearly as attractive as some of the other architecture in the town of Washington, but it will be a decent building, an attractive building from a government perspective. I think if we use some imagination and some landscaping, that we can do something extraordinary. Finally, that group will also be looking at a way to memorialize the building and the history of the building that has existed at that spot. So if you are interested in being on that group, John Sullivan has agreed to chair that group. Would you please either contact me or Laura Dodd, and we ask that of the members of the town, citizens of the town, but we would greatly appreciate your involvement. It is also a time where I am working on a lot of fishing expeditions right now to begin the process of looking at grants, and before we would ever get to the point of submitting a grant, there would be a lot of opportunity for public input and council discussion, but the town is at a point where there is some infrastructure things that the town has indicated through past forums and the comprehensive plan that they would like, such as pathways and another improvement in sidewalks, second, well, there may be a need to replace some of the water meters, and there is also an opportunity to perhaps take the comprehensive plan to the next level with a more detailed and professional level of planning process. All these things are in process and will, as I said, as we move into the fall, there will be an opportunity for discussion, both with the public and with town council members, to try to move forward on those things. Two other things, as I said, this is a meeting of good news. The revenues are up for the town of Washington, and Gail Swift will have more details, but it's nice to know that things are on the improvement in that area. It's always good to have revenues up. And finally, I want to pass on to town council members and members of the planning commission and the architectural review board that the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission has its annual meeting on Thursday, September 26th at 5:00 p.m. at Prince Michel Vineyard, which is just north of Colback. So those are all my things I wanted to bring up today. May I swip?
Thank you. All of the regular monthly reports in front of you, nothing unusual, report, whatever. However, this is drumroll, un-audited, thank you. Looking at fiscal year 2018-19 versus fiscal year 17-18, total income is up 30%, and expenses have only up 15%. Meals and lodging make up a good part of that being up 21%. Once we get everything audited, some kind of [inaudible].
21%?
And total income is up 30%. Meals and lodging is up 21%. I can give you the exact [inaudible]. It's like a 20.97, and expenses are only up 15%. A good part of that is due to a friendly town attorney, but who we kept very busy recently, so, thank you, John. That's just a quick recap for me?
All right, thank you. Great.
Any questions on the regular monthly reports, bills, or anything else?
All right. We don't follow. So we have to approve the treasurer's report, and I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Second? Thank you. Catherine, second. And roll call, Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Planning Commission?
Yes, the planning commission met on July 22nd. We discussed two items. The first were revised terms of reference for the planning commission itself, and I think we would expect to be forwarding those to you for your next meeting. And then we discussed the draft resolution that was referred to us on the extension of the boundaries of the town. And we had, we had two points really at issue that we wanted to come back informally to the town lawyer. One was the question of why there was no mention of Piedmont Avenue, and the second one was what is the natural boundary on Harris Hollow, which was left blank in the draft resolution. And beyond that, we made, we edited it, I think, well, we think we improved it, but we would expect to come back to you at the next, we will discuss it further after we hear from John at our meeting on the 26th, and we will come back to you for your next meeting. And then maybe as chair of the planning commission, I can say this because I wasn't actually on the planning commission when we did the comprehensive plan, but Fred, listening to you just now, you're opening remarks, you said there might be a need to do a more drill down version of the comprehensive plan. I had two immediate reactions to that. One is I think we did have, and I'm speaking now here, Judy was on from the beginning, we did have technical input to that comprehensive plan, but more importantly, it seems to me that everything that you're talking about, housing, infrastructure, lighting, sidewalks, can easily be dealt with within the remit of the current comprehensive plan. It's only been in place for a year and a bit, so as chair, I would just question whether we really need to do more work on the planning, on the comprehensive plan, or what we really need to do is drill down work on separate issues, but I would be nervous about messing with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry if my comments were taken in the wrong context. Oh, okay. It was not meant to be a revision of the comprehensive plan, but there are some questions about what is truly the sewer capacity that the town of Washington has. What is, that's the primary thing that comes through. When we worked on the comprehensive plan, many municipalities and counties, when they do their comprehensive plan, they hand a professional planning staff. We did not have that opportunity. We had people who have had a professional experience that they have provided, but part of what I am thinking about is not really, is not touching the comprehensive plan per se, is to get some more of that detail, to get a more public involvement.
So I would just suggest politically, I think the nomenclature matters, so I think it would be good to accept that the comprehensive plan is staying as it is, and we're doing further work on issues of sewer, whatever the [inaudible]. Technical, technical, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
The second is, as the author of the poorly written initial resolution, that Piedmont Avenue was included in there, and it wasn't, it was basically, I think, said to the foot, to the bottom of whatever that mountain is, Marshall Mountain, to the west, and that there was no reference to Harris Hollow.
Well, the resolution we got talked about natural boundaries.
Right.
Harris Hollow, and it said to Mount, and it was left blank, and there was no
Gotcha.
No reference to Piedmont.
Gotcha.
Which I think is quite important. If owners and residents on Piedmont wanted to [inaudible].
It was, it was, whatever it was implicit, I probably should have made it more explicit.
We'll come back to you for your next meeting.
Thank you. Architectural Review Board?
Meeting is canceled for this morning.
Meeting is canceled for Wednesday. All right, Mr. Bennett? All right, I open up a public hearing for consideration and possible adoption of new town permit fees. Mr. Bennett?
Cancel, ladies and gentlemen. I went and researched what the adjoining jurisdictions were charging and slightly more removed jurisdictions like [inaudible], and didn't examine jurisdictions that had any significant real urban component that sort of dominated their fee schedules, because we start to look at those, they're rather breathtaking. Percentage wise, some of the increases represent a significant percentage increase, but in dollars, they don't represent that much. The [inaudible] the fees that are proposed is that when a private party makes an application for use of its private property, that the burden for evaluating that application, the expense involved shouldn't fall back in large measure to the taxpayers. With these fees proposed, there's still going to be a portion that's going to fall back on the town to pay, but really the idea is to reduce that where it should be the applicant paying more than half of the process. There's the advertising cost would fall back on the applicant. In every case, there's, if it were necessary, to hire specialists, consultants, engineers, graphic engineers, that's, I don't think everybody does in the history of town, it would be a stretch for me to imagine that right now, but that type of thing, that expense would go back to the applicant and not be borne by the town. So the base application fees are an attempt to even things out more where when an application doesn't come in, it's really the expenses, all the taxpayers. I tried to make it sort of, not split the difference, but make it where more of the anticipated and normal expenses in the various type of cases would fall on the applicant instead of the town realizing that there's still a portion of the town's ultimate going to have to be responsible for.
In your comparisons, were any of the towns really small like this?
I looked at Madison. Madison, Percyville is throughout as an outlier because of the type of development that it had in the Ryan Homes and all that. You know, since then, along with [inaudible]. Yes, I tried, I did look at Sandersville. I tried to find some jurisdictions that were more comparable directly to town, and there was a wide range there. Some were very expensive, some were more expensive, so it came back to me trying to, in my view, to try to estimate in particular type of application, what is going to be the overall expense involved, and have that fall more on the applicant than on the town. And that's really what got me, because the different jurisdictions were really all over the place, and if you were to try and emulate any one jurisdiction, it would be very low or very high.
I open up to the public. Any questions? Mr. Bennett for town council members from the public? Yes, sir.
Really quick observations. One, I don't know that you can find a comparable town to Washington in any of the surrounding counties, I think we're the one off. Two, I agree entirely with Mr. Bennett's sense that especially for the town of Washington, costs should be paid by the developing party or the individual coming forward. Unlike most jurisdictions, the finances of this town depend almost, well, you know the percentage, you could ask your treasurer, on meals and lodging. Those are transits. So unlike most places where residents are taxpaying members to support the infrastructure of the government, most of the residents of Washington town pay very little to support the structure, and that's probably as it should be, but that means that any additional costs that would be put on the administration of the town should really be borne by those creating them. Third observation is that even though we're a very small town, I'll bet you if you do comparisons on the value of real estate, lots and constructed buildings and resale, we're well above the norm for anything that you could even begin to say is comparable. So if you sort of choke at some of these values, think about what the resale of the finished brunt is in the town of Washington. Think about some recent properties that have been conveyed, and I think you'll see that these fees are really quite minuscule compared to the investment values most people who would be converting to a commercial use, anything that would require the kinds of review that these fees cover. So I think for some very specific and unique reasons, what my own first glance looks like, huge increases are really quite justified, and going forward, I'd rather see, I'm a former town person, but I do track through occasionally, I would rather see the town's resources be spent on the things that are really going to be beneficial to the long-term future of the town, rather than essentially subsidizing individual property owners or people who have a business interest.
If there's an error in these fees, if the approach is to avoid undue expense or significant expense of town in the tuba, that a lot of jurisdictions really charge enormous fees to go through the land planning process, and in relation to those, these fees are very modest, and we've had a fairly simple land planning process, and if that were to change, these fees would really need to be revisited because they're too much.
Baby steps.
Absolutely right covering, you want to somehow cover the costs of the research or whatever you know.
Mr. Senna? Judy? Any other questions or comments? Then can I have a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented? Oh, sorry, we have to close the public hearing? Public hearing is so closed. Yes, roll call. Motion to close the public hearing? I will move to close the public hearing. You second? Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to approve the fee schedule?
I like the motion that we approve the fee schedule as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. 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 Thank you. We are done with the rich town permit fees. Old business. We have a vacancy on the planning commission, and we have an applicant for that. Jean. Okay, yeah. All right. Jean Kaufman is the person who has indicated, has submitted an application to be on the planning commission. Before we have any comments from the town council, the chair of the planning commission, do you have any comments?
Well, I think she would be a contributing strong member because resident of Rappahannock for 20 years, during which time she was EMT, a voluntary EMT on the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Rescue. She's been on the board of Rappats. She's now living in the house, on Raw, I taught you. She's now living in the house just down for the sack a little way. She moved here in June. She's a lawyer by training, which is always good to have on the planning commission, and most importantly, she's very committed to the town and to civic rights and responsibilities, so I think she should be a strong member.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion with town council members?
I would just like to echo what Carolyn said, because Jean attended the last planning commission meeting, and as part of the public conversation, she was extremely helpful with some of the things we were discussing.
That's correct.
So you have more than one application right now?
No, we only have one application. We also have an opening on the architectural review board. We have an application for that as well. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Jean Kaufman as a member of the planning commission.
Do we have a second to that?
Thank you.
Roll call, those in favor, indicate by saying aye or yes.
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 Yes. All right. Ms. Kaufman, wherever you are, we are so happy that you're on the planning commission. We also have, oh, I'm sorry. We also have an opening on the architectural review board in this. All right. Ms. Smith, hi. Thank you for applying. You overwhelm us with all of your planning background. Very impressive. And do you want to talk a little bit about yourself? You don't have to say too much, but I would love to give you the floor in case you'd like that.
You don't think I read it all?
Yes, but I'm not sure everybody has read all of it.
I already have a recipe in hand, so it's not too much.
You want me to read it for you?
But I do have a background in historic preservation. I've worked in several southern states, native of Virginia, came back home about five years ago, and I've been working for the town of Washington for the last three years, as members of the [inaudible]. And I live in the old [inaudible], so I'm very committed to historic preservation and archaeology.
Or so pleased that you [inaudible]. Any comments from, any questions or comments from members of the town council?
Lucky, yes.
I think very fortunate that you exposed everything, exposed the business, like Ray, where Warren Tenney, [inaudible] and break my expertise this way.
Well, without any further ado, may I have a motion? Because you're.
Comment.
Take on second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, vote to approve Suzanne Smith for the position on the architectural review board?
Yes.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you do not have a meeting on Wednesday. All right. New business. Atrium Construction proposal for the electrical repair at Voiceford Treatment Plant.
This is something that we have to do on the list. This is not on the list of, if it's not on the infrastructure to-do list, this is something that when Laura can explain a little better probably than I do, but the original wiring, wires hooking on wires instead of one solid wire, so when we lost power, there must have, that's when it's all discovered, so it has to be totally wired.
This isn't.
And I think this is a very, I personally, Brad, your point could be too, is a very reasonable cost for all of that.
Yeah, is this related to the level controller or anything? What is this, is it just simply a wire bundle that's being changed?
No, it's the level controller wired to the building.
Okay. And so they use the multi-conductor, now we need to run separate wire pairs.
It wasn't a solid [inaudible].
Oh, that's a shot. That's a surprise. So, you know, if they can clean out that conduit and pull fresh wire pairs, that'll be good.
Is this something that there's possible, is there any insurance for this or?
Was it a design effect?
Installed effect.
Here's a case of, in my opinion, the drawings and then as it was executed. It is a case of, in my opinion, the drawings and then as it was executed, was not overseen correctly. So corners were cut in
That keeps coming back to haunt us over and over.
Yes, corners were cut more and more again, and this is just one more. So is that kind of what the town's understood? Need us to discuss?
We had a opening of a contract. Someone was overseeing the general construction that we had a lot of phase in and then I think it closed down. We, I mean, I didn't
No, it's, in my opinion too, having spent a lot of time in factories and treatment plants and all this kind of stuff, there were a lot of shortcuts being taken. It's easier to pull one cable that's multi-conductor versus running separate wire pairs. So they just said, oh, we're going to need four or five wire pairs. Just run one cable, pull it, and done. But when you have to repair that, that means you pull the whole thing out and everything else is connected, aside from the, maybe the item that you're trying to fix, everything has to be down for new wires. So, yeah, they made out because they managed to get it done quickly and everything. But the maintainability is compromised, and that's what we're paying for. And there, again, whether it's wiring, whether it's mechanical, you know, plumbing inside of this thing, there are bits and pieces that are going to keep popping up. So now, as long as what they're doing is pulling in the proper wire pairs, then we're okay. The last thing we want to do is pull a pair of wires and then say, oh, gee, those weren't right, or now we're going to pull it again and start it again two years from now because it isn't compatible or something like that. So I would say that we would, my opinion is, yeah, it's probably not a bad price. I don't know how many days or anything, there's not a lot of detail here. But certainly, we would want to have detail on exactly what they're going to do. They're pursuing, what materials are they using? You know, how many days is it going to take?
So you're suggesting we get it more detailed, that's what?
I think it's worthwhile, I have, I mean, you're saying $3,500 for materials, labor, tools, and truck. Okay. Break it down, of course, a little bit. If it's, you know, the ideas, are you running 10 feet of wire, materials in this conduit? Or are you running 100 feet?
Maybe I need to suggest is that you authorize up to this contingent that it was approved by the mayor.
Yeah.
So that it's not approved anymore because they gave to me a while back? And it means another month?
Yeah, I would say, you know, that's probably
Something like that, I may have been able to word it better, but I think, I say because this is coming from the people in the code, and the people that work down there, they have a lot of faith of this proposal.
No, I think so, I think it's probably approved for the amount. And then we would just ask for a submittal prior to the start of work. Gives us a better detail.
So, Brad, you should call it.
Well, I think motion to approve the estimate for atrium construction for the $4,350 that they've given us, that we authorize to go ahead, but prior to the start of work, that they provide us with a detailed breakdown of the scope of work, materials to be used, manpower, etc.
You want to approve this time or authorize that you and the mayor can approve?
I would say we authorize it to approve. But again, they cannot start work without us proceeding on what they can break down.
You might, let's say they wanted to start next week, would it?
Then submit it to us and then we will review it.
Who will review it?
I can do it.
So if we see it first?
Yeah, yeah. If they send it to me, I'll review it and if I see yes, then I'll just get the mayors to agree as well, and then couple this way.
God's sake. Because I was going to rely on your expertise in this area, Patrick. We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Bennett, do you think you have something for us to read? Or does everybody feel comfortable with the motion?
Yes.
On the Town Council, roll call. And Patrick seconded it, so roll call, vote to approve?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right. Open up for public forum. Public forum. Any comments from the public? One wants, twice. All right. Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public forum. And at this point, Mr. Bennett, we would like to go into closed session. The formal motion to be entered in closed session in accordance with the provision of section 2.2, 2.711, able to discuss and consider respect for any candidates for a former county town as town officials. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you. Those matters that were identified in the motion by which the foregoing closed session was convened, and only those matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requiring some agenda freedom of information act were discussed or considered during the foregoing closed session.
Yes.
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 Mayor second, Councilor's open second. All right. May I have a motion to appoint a new town clerk?
I would like a motion that we, that the town hire candidate Barbara Batson as the new town clerk.
We have a second to that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think she'll be a fine candidate, or a fine town clerk, and you look forward to working with her. I have a roll call, vote, and Kate, yes, if you approve of this hiring. Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
They're really big shoes to fill.
So noted unanimously. Thank you. We have a second motion about consultation agreement.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we enter into a consultation agreement with Laura Dye, as outlined in the note, and authorize Fred to still sign it.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you.
The only other piece that we have is that to establish work policies for the position. Do I have any comments aside from, I'm going to add to make a motion that the work policies for town clerk, for town of Washington town clerk be accepted with the addition of subject to the terms of the policy under health insurance.
And there's written summary of that that's available now?
Yes. I can do this.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, second.
Awesome.
Thank you. Very nice second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please indicate by saying yes, if you approve of these work policies. Yes or yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We are all done. Now, to you. We are going back into closed session. I can't remember your name, I'm so sorry.
Oh, Luke?
Luke, yeah. We're going back into closed session.
Okay.
So I will tell you honestly that it is probably not worth your time, oh, you're going to be wrong, not worth your time to come back. But I will not prevent you from doing so. You're more than welcome to come back if you want to.
Okay, the estimate time?
Could be 10 minutes.